Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the regular meeting of the DeKalb City Council, June 10, 2019. Prior to our roll call this evening, I would like to remind anyone in the audience who would like to speak to any item on the agenda, or for that matter, any item not on the agenda, to kindly fill out a speaker request form there in the back of the room there, and give those to our city clerk, Lynn Fizikas, who will get those to me, and we will get you on at the appropriate time. Just a reminder that for any who might like to speak to an item and don't have the time to wait until they get to that, we get to that item on the agenda, you're more than welcome to make your comments under Item D on tonight's agenda, and that's public participation. With that being said, I'd like to ask our city clerk, Lynn Fizikas, to call the roll, please.
Morris.
Here.
Fanouken.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Fagan.
Here.
McAdams.
Here.
Verbic. Favor.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you for the roll call, and I would now call your attention to the screens in Would you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I thought it was appropriate that on the eve prior to the opening of the 165th anniversary of the DeKalb Municipal Band, that we should play that. I appreciate Director Kirk Lenbeck sending that to me. Tomorrow evening, the 165th season of the DeKalb Municipal Band kicks off, 8:00 PM, at the D Palmer Band Shell at Hopkins Park. Eight o'clock tomorrow night, and there will be on successive Tuesdays through the summer. Okay, with that little bit of flair, let's approve the agenda for tonight. Are there any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda? Alderman Fanouken.
Mr. Mayor, at the request of the city clerk, I'd like to have the meeting minutes from May 28 removed and postponed for two weeks. I understand they need some further review before approval.
And I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda with that one deletion. Would that be appropriate?
I believe that that's the appropriate motion to make, yes.
Okay, and before we take a vote on that, I'd like to ask our city clerk, Lynn Fizikas, who I understand requested that be removed from the agenda, to give a short explanation.
Sure. I took a phone call from a constituent this afternoon, and there is some sort of mix-up or perhaps error, hate to say that, but perhaps error, in the meeting minutes when it comes to public participation. And I didn't have time to review the audio for that, so I'd like to take some time to review the audio for that. If I can do that and then resubmit the minutes at the next regular meeting, we won't miss any deadlines and we'll possibly have something more accurate.
Okay, and actually, we'll be removing that off of the consent agenda also.
That's correct, the first item of the consent agenda.
But there is that minor deletion to the, to an item on the agenda. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda with the one deletion. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
Thank you. The agenda is approved as amended. We now move to Item D, under public participation, and I have no one who has indicated a desire to speak to any item on the agenda at this point. Is that correct? Good, then we will wait until we get to the appropriate item on the agenda to call those folks up for their public participation. So we move on to E, presentations. Safe Passage, FY 2019 Human Services Funding Report by the Director of Communication and Prevention Services, Linay Luskowski. Linay, hi.
Thank you all for the opportunity to be with you this evening, and thank you to our council members and city staff for all your hard work in our community. Safe Passage was created and continues to exist only because of the passion and support of our community. We are grateful to work in DeKalb County alongside community members and professionals who genuinely believe that we can end violence in our county and beyond. For those of you who may not be familiar with our services, Safe Passage is DeKalb County's Domestic Violence and Sexual Assault Crisis Center. We provide 24-hour emergency shelter, long-term housing, group, individual, and family counseling, legal and medical advocacy, professional training and prevention education, and offender intervention services. Our services are available to people of any age and any gender, no matter when they experienced abuse, and all our survivor services are provided completely free of charge. In the past year, we have continued to grow our partnership with the DeKalb Police and other police departments, ensuring that through our lethality assessment program, the most vulnerable survivors are connected immediately to services. We have opened satellite offices in Sycamore and Sandwich to ensure the entire county has access to our life-saving support, and, of course, as you are no doubt aware, we are finally moving forward in the process of building an entirely new center to continue to provide trauma-informed care to every victim of violence. We have seen the need for our services continue to grow. In the past year, we have served 894 clients, which is an increase of 32% from the previous year. Of those clients, 421 were from DeKalb, which is an increase of 27% from the previous year, and we provided over 20,000 hours of service to survivors, again, a 19% increase in service from the previous year. These numbers can be discouraging as we look at the work to fully end violence in our county, but we are encouraged to know that more survivors are feeling safe to come forward, share their stories, and reach out for the life-saving support they deserve. We look forward to the day when our services are no longer needed, but until then, we are honored to work alongside our incredibly brave clients. We are so grateful for the city's support and financial partnership as we provide these services. We could not do this work without your generosity and your compassion. We believe every citizen in DeKalb has the right to safe, healthy relationships, and we are grateful for your support and partnership in this journey. Thank you.
Thank you, Linay. Great service, great organization, great report. Any comments or questions of Linay? If not, thank you very, very much, appreciate it. Okay, moving right along, Item F, appointments. While I do not have any appointments for console consideration tonight, I would like to report that current vacancies exist on the Airport Advisory Board, the Building Code Board of Appeals, the Environmental Commission, the Human Relations Commission, and the Landmark Commission. Now, several of these are in the process of being filled, which I attempt to do after soliciting current commission members and current commission board chairs, and using my own sense of what particular talents may be needed in our city. Aldermen have been especially helpful in submitting names to me. It's in this vein that I will be visiting with our three new aldermen, Alderman Morris, Alderman Smith, Alderman McAdams, to not only apprise you of the current vacancies, but to gauge your interest in getting more intimately involved in a board or commission. We have been fortunate in having Alderman Fagan as liaison to the Economic Development Commission, Alderman Verbic, who is not with us tonight, with finance advisory, Commission of Favor as our liaison to the Airport Advisory Committee, and serving as one of the liaisons to the Annie Glidden North Revitalization Project recently, Alderman Fanouken. I continue to be heartened by suggestions from the public, and I hope that future considerations may come as a result of this kind of public participation. Look forward to working with council on the boards and commissions as those vacancies come up. Now our consent agenda. Again, all of these items are enacted by one motion. We have had a change on the consent agenda. We have removed the minutes of the regular city council meeting of May 28, 2019. So I would like to read the three items that are on the consent agenda for this evening for your consideration. Number one, approval of executive session minutes. Number two, accounts payable and payroll through June 10, 2019, in the amount of $2,092,420.35. And number three, Resolution 2019-089, authorizing the execution of a workers' compensation lump sum petition and order in the amount of $158,674. You'll note that I have renumbered those consent agenda items. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman Favor. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Smith.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
Consent agenda is approved as read. Now we move on to public hearings, and we do have one. I will open this public hearing at 6:14 PM. Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Annual Action Plan, that's for one-year use of funds, for Program Year 26, that's April 1, 2019, through March 31 of 2020. Is there anyone in the public, from the public, wishing to speak to this item? If not, I'd ask City Manager Nicholas to speak to the item.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. This item, as you reported, comes up annually, the Annual Action Plan for our CDBG program is a single-year plan, obviously, is part of a five-year consolidated plan that the council most recently amended about five months ago. The 2019 CDBG allocation is $439,129. And in addition to this particular allocation, the city does get the benefit of carrying over some unspent dollars, and there's a chart in your, on page three of your summary, which identifies what those carryover funds are. I'll say nothing more, except that this is an opportunity that the public has to comment on this. We have tried to make this opportunity known, not just through our website, but at a number of places, the DeKalb Public Library, this, our city hall, of course, in a couple of places. A press release was sent to our local media back in, earlier in May, and we have, I think, done everything we can do and a little more to invite public comment, so.
Thank you for that report. All right, at this point, are there any comments regarding that? And Steve, was that on your?
No, but public hearing was open, right?
Okay, very good. That is correct.
I wasn't really planning on speaking, but it did come to mind. I thought that the city in the past has used some of the CDBG money to support homeownership, and I would urge the council to consider returning to that aspect of it. I know you've got housing rehabilitation in there, which is a good thing, but there is, I didn't see a line designated for, in helping first-time home buyers.
Thank you. And we'll duly note, that was Steve Capitan from the 3rd Ward who spoke. Any other members of the public who would like to address any item on this agenda item during this public hearing, following City Manager Nicholas's presentation? If not, I will close this public hearing at 6:17 PM. Okay, moving on to considerations. Item I on your agenda, consideration of a request by Barb City Manor to extend the current lease with the city of DeKalb. I believe this is a non-action item tonight. I think City Manager Nicholas, based on some action in previous meetings on this item, simply wants to get some kind of a consensus, is that right, from council tonight? Prior to City Manager Nicholas's report, we have a number of folks who would like to speak to this item. The first one is Ron Klein.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Ron Klein. I've been a resident of DeKalb, City DeKalb, for 52 years, and all of my life in the county, and I want to speak tonight and be in support of the Barb City Manor, which I've been familiar with for many years. I'm sure you're familiar with the history of that structure. Originally, of course, it was the DeKalb City Hospital, and that was constructed in 1921. And in 1961, with the help of the Jacob Hesch Foundation, an addition was built to the hospital. And it remained the hospital for some time, until after both of my kids were born there, so after that at least, and until Kishawaki Hospital, the first Kishawaki Hospital was built. And at that time, the hospital was closed, the old city public hospital. A number of citizens, Slim Frytag among them, if some of you remember him, were active in organizing the Barb City Manor, and that opened in 1979. My good friend, April Schreiber, was the supervisor, director of that from 1980 till 1995. April died a couple of months ago, but she was there for many years and I think did a good job of managing it. She was followed by Ellen Tyne, and now we have Maureen Garrity. Over the past 40 years, I've had occasion to be in the Barb City Manor many, many times. A great many of my clients have lived there and do live there, and I can tell you that not a single one of them ever complained to me when I would visit them at the Manor. Often, I ate there with them, and the food was always excellent. But in summary, I would say it's been well-run, it's clean, good meals, as I said, no complaints. It's in a quiet area of town, a quiet neighborhood, and it's an ideal spot for that type of facility because there's not a lot of traffic, like there would be with a hotel, for example, or some other facility, and plenty of parking there for the people that do come. It fills a very significant niche, I think, between the situation of people who no longer can live alone, or at least aren't comfortable living in their own homes alone, and a nursing home, that aren't ready for a nursing home. And often, these are people who cannot afford to buy into a more expensive facility. Oak Crest is extremely nice, but you do have to buy into it, and it takes a fair amount of money to do that. At Barb City, you do not have to buy in, you rent, and it's very affordable for a lot of people. I think the proposal submitted by the board of $50,000 a year for 10 years makes a lot of sense. It's easy to plan around something like that, you know what's happening, both for the city and for Barb City. I'm thinking of a hearing we had in front of the Planning and Zoning Committee recently about the old St. Mary's Hospital, which has been sitting empty for, what, 20 years or more, and a local developer came in and wanted to get approval for a $7 million project. Two and a half million would come from the city. I don't ever want to see that type of thing happen to this facility. I think it fills a need, a great need in the community, it's a wonderful asset in the community, and I think that the proposal, as I said, of the $50,000 a year makes sense. I hear these huge amounts of money suggested for various projects, and compared to the two and a half million, for example, that was proposed there, I think $50,000 a year really is pretty affordable and makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Taryn Thaden.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yes, my name is Taryn Thaden, and I am the current president of the Board of Directors of Barb City Manor, and I have been serving as a member for eight years. In my years of learning, serving, and supporting Barb City Manor, I have become devoted and a true advocate for this residential facility. I must say that I have the utmost respect and appreciation for this impactful organization, the committed board, and the Barb City Manor's dedicated staff. I have noticed throughout the years that the staff and employees don't treat their jobs as work, but as an opportunity to serve and be caregivers of those wonderful residents and of this retirement home. It doesn't take a visitor long to notice that the residents of Barb City Manor feel that same way. This retirement home truly feels like home, and the residents share a family-type of bond. It is with knowing these conditions that I feel we, as a city and the community, need to work together to continue this 40-year commitment that has benefited so many, so many families and employees. This building is not only a home for seniors living there, but also a nostalgic piece of DeKalb history. As Barb City Manor continues to be self-sustaining in our organization, I am thankful, though, for the city's dedication and additional financial contributions, and throughout these years, it has been wonderful. So many of the necessary building maintenance projects could not have been accomplished without the help of the TIF funding that had been provided. Now that is going away, we know, and so that's kind of the crux of the matter here. With the city being the owner of this wonderful building, we as a board and the staff take great pride in knowing that we have done our best and have been good stewards of this Architects, engineers, and contractors, and also we as a board alongside our Barb City Manor staff, have worked diligently to make the best decisions on needed improvements to the building grounds and facilities. Barb City Manor staff and board have been active throughout the years in pursuing fundraising opportunities with our annual financial appeal, getting involved in the DeKalb County Community Foundation Give Local Campaign, and many others. We also promote Barb City Manor with various marketing tools, such as informational brochures, newspaper and radio ads.
You're at four minutes now, Taryn, so try to wrap it up if you would.
Okay, I'm sorry, and all sorts of information, that's so great. Try Us, You're Like Us, that's a wonderful package that we have. I would like to say, this is what I'd like to see. I feel that we need to look at a 10-year service commitment because it affords all current residents and future residents, along with their families, a sense of security and dependability. This will provide an assurance we need to continue to market this facility. We want the residents and potential clients and families to feel confident that they have a home for years to come. I would also like to see the city help assist in the needed future building maintenance with financial support of $50,000 per year. This support will help to make sure that building grounds and facilities will continue to be maintained at the present level. Thank you very much.
I apologize for not indicating to the folks that we would respectfully request that you keep your limit, your comments to three minutes or less. It is on the speaker request form, and again, I apologize for not verbalizing that earlier. Okay, our next speaker is Ellen Tyne.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members.
Good evening.
I'm Ellen Tyne. I was employed at Barb City Manor for 28 years between 1986 and 2014. I would like to share a little bit more history, I know Ron covered some of it already, but just a couple other things that, you know, I wanted to touch base on with the history of Barb City Manor and the building. Most of all of this, most of the information that I have is from working for nine years with April Schreiber as the administrator when I was the assistant administrator. In 1976, Kishawaki Hospital opened and left a former DeKalb Public Hospital vacant. A group of concerned, caring citizens, business people in the community created the idea of a retirement home in the building, and this was an idea that was way before its time for a retirement home of this type. Ralph Seig, Slim Frytag, Ken and Max Heide, Art Flint, Rick Walker, and many others created Barb City Manor Retirement Home. For the initial renovation monies that it took to fix Barb City Manor so that it could hold residents, came from the Hill Burton Act, which was, and an act that was signed into law by President Truman in 1946, and that provided construction grants and loans, and that was money that stayed with that DeKalb Public Hospital building. When Kishawaki Hospital was created, that money remained there. After opening in 1970- After opening in 1979, Barb City Manor and the City of DeKalb worked out a relationship where the finance department assisted with services such as bill-paying of vendors and staff salaries, but this was for services and not for money or loans. And then in 1993, Barb City Manor separated from the city with a formal agreement that established the TIF funds, and that came about. Bill was city manager at the time, and Barb City Manor's air conditioner broke and created quite a problem. And so this separation was created. It helped with the TIF funds. It also created a separate entity for Barb City Manor, which was Barb City Manor, Inc., which enabled Barb City Manor to go after more grants and fundraising of other types. And that way, we were totally separate from the city, and it was easier for Barb City Manor to raise money that way. Barb City Manor has always been an affordable option for retirement living and has been financially responsible for day-to-day expenses and upkeep of the retirement home. The relationship between the city and Barb City Manor has been one where both have benefited, I feel. Barb City Manor has received financial assistance from TIF funds for large and important building improvements, such as the new air conditioner, a generator, plumbing upgrades, roof replacements, window replacements. And these all have enhanced the safety of the building and the overall energy efficiency of the building, and the outward appearance of it. The windows just made a major difference in how the building looked. And during the past forty years that Barb City Manor has been open, they have provided safe, comfortable, and affordable retirement living to hundreds and hundreds of DeKalb seniors, as well as my mother and Maureen's mother. My mom was at Barb City Manor for five years, and Maureen's for seven.
You're well over four minutes, Ellen.
Okay. Please continue this excellent relationship to keep Barb City Manor affordable for current and future residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. I really apologize if I seem to be an ogre. I mean, three minutes is three minutes, and I think if I've given folks four minutes, does that seem to be a reasonable assumption? And again, I apologize for interrupting you. I really do. So I'm putting the next speaker on the spot. And that is Maureen Garrity.
Well, it's been forty years. It's hard to get forty years in three minutes.
That's right.
Good evening, Mayor Smith, council members, city staff, community members. My name is Maureen Garrity, and I am the administrator of Barb City Manor Retirement Home. I followed Ellen Tyne, and I'm grateful to her for hiring me and grateful to Avril for retiring so that I could work at Barb City Manor. I told her that all the time, that I was grateful for that. On behalf of the residents of Barb City Manor and the Barb City Manor, Inc. Board of Directors, I want to thank you and city council for the forty-year partnership between Barb City Manor and the City of DeKalb. As we work together on a new lease agreement, the Barb City Manor, Inc. Board of Directors is proposing a ten-year agreement with an annual contribution of fifty thousand dollars from the city for major building projects. This is essentially half of the original twenty-year, one-hundred-thousand-dollar annual funding agreement that was signed in 1993 when the not-for-profit Barb City Manor, Inc. took over management of the building, of the retirement home. And I'd like to explain the reasoning behind this proposal. One, we believe that the landlord-tenant relationship is the right fit for the DeKalb Public Hospital buildings. These buildings hold special meaning to the community and serve as a historic legacy for future generations. Major building projects must be approved by city council, and this process allows the community to keep tabs on the work that is being done. Barb City Manor is self-sustaining. Our day-to-day operations, including routine building maintenance and repairs, are fully funded by resident rents. Funding from the city has been used for long-range capital projects. Over the years, improvement projects, such as the activity room addition, east wing sunroom remodeling with wheelchair lift, and replacement of all the windows in the building have added to the value of the property. The east wing is ninety-eight years old; the new wing is sixty years old. When improvements are made, new code standards must be met, adding to the cost. And many of these improvement projects were paid for with a combination of city funds, grants, and donations. Barb City Manor is proposing a ten-year lease term to give residents and their families confidence that Barb City Manor will be here for them in the years ahead. Currently, we have nine residents that have lived at BCM six years or more, and the resident that has been here the longest moved in twelve years ago. Under the terms of the agreement proposed by the board, Barb City Manor will be responsible for making up the fifty thousand dollar difference each year. We're a member of the DeKalb County Nonprofit Partnership. This partnership offers training and resources to assist nonprofits in raising awareness in the community and nurturing donors. We participated in the annual Give Local, Give DeKalb County event. We've applied for grants over the years through the Foundation for Building Projects, and we actually have a person on staff that thinks fundraising is fun. So our staff and Board of Directors take great pride in the partnership that we've had over the years, and we look forward to continuing to serve our senior citizens and our community for years to come. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Maureen. Next individual who'd like to speak is Helen Maurer.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I've only been on the board three years, so I think I'm going to be good with the three-minute thing. So, anyway. Helen Maurer, I am a retired geriatric and medical social worker who's worked in the community for a number of years, and I am now a board member. And I would like to speak a little bit to the value of Barb City Manor in our community. It's a congregate living site, which means that it's primarily for independent seniors. Some of them are becoming a little more frail. Some of them maybe haven't been eating very well, and when they come to Barb City Manor, they get three really good meals a day, and that really improves their nutrition, improves their health. Some of them have been somewhat socially isolated, maybe living alone before they come to Barb City Manor. And when they come to Barb City Manor, they really feel very welcomed, and it's a very lovely atmosphere there with social support. I believe that Barb City Manor, as has been said earlier, I believe it has delayed people going to nursing homes, or maybe even prevented it altogether. I was a hospice social worker for a time, and sometimes people were able to live to the very end of their life at Barb City Manor and receive hospice care, which is another benefit of Barb City Manor. It does serve primarily low and middle-class seniors in our community. There is a resident endowment fund to help pay for their rent. Some of them also get help from the public housing in our area as well. But I will say, I have a friend who is there now, and he is very high-end as far as finances go, and could certainly have gone to any facility he wanted to. He checked them all out, much more luxurious than Barb City Manor, but he ultimately chose Barb City Manor because of the atmosphere there, the acceptance and social atmosphere there. So Barb City Manor is a gem in our community, and I believe it has really added to the high quality of life for many people. So I know we're considering this ten-year lease with the fifty thousand dollars each year. I know the financial constraints of the city. My husband was the former city engineer, so I know about the financial constraints. But I know I was also shocked when I came on the board to find out how expensive it is for maintenance of a building like that. I was really rather shocked to do the maintenance and then the upgrades that are needed to keep in compliance. So we definitely are stepping up the fundraising at Barb City Manor. We're committed to do that, as others have said, and I just appreciate so much your consideration of the ten-year lease extension with the fifty thousand each year. Thank you.
Our next speaker, who would like to speak to this item, is Steve Capitan.
Others have said what needs to be said, so I will be under three minutes. I've been in DeKalb for thirty-nine of the forty years of the existence of Barb City Manor, and it's an important institution. I think it's interesting that you played that clip of another institution in this city of the municipal band. Barb City Manor is another institution of forty years. People have spoken to its value, but one of the things that hadn't been mentioned is that they have a relationship with the NIU nursing department. That is something that I think is a positive relationship with the university that I think should be mentioned. And also that regardless of what you decide in this transition with the elimination of TIF money, I think that the bottom line that you should be evaluating here is to ensure the long-term viability of this institution as you go through this transition. Keep that in mind as that bottom line. So that's my appeal. Thank you.
Forgot to mention, I've been a contributor and will continue to contribute in the future.
I'm afraid that if the speakers tonight are on the admissions committee for Barb City Manor, in the event that my wife and I apply, we may be in trouble, so, thank you.
Keep application.
Thank you, Ron. City manager Nicholas, I know you have some comments regarding this council's consideration of these requests.
I do, and it falls to me to talk about the reason why, this is on the agenda tonight and was back in earlier in May, and that is the business relationship between the city government as the owner and Barb City Manor, Inc., and more specifically, the lease, which is the crux of that and the crux of what is on the agenda tonight. I couldn't attempt to be as eloquent in describing the many services provided by the people who have lived there and the benefit that has been felt by so many families, so I'm not going to try to do that. I think that case has been made very well tonight. But to the point on the agenda, we have a lease which will expire at the end of this month. In that lease, as was mentioned by some of the speakers, there has been also a financial arrangement whereby the city has provided over years up to a hundred thousand dollars for major capital improvements. And there's been a provision in that lease that if that hundred thousand is not spent, there can be a carryover, and the amount, as I mentioned in my background, currently owed to the Barb City Manor is a total of two-hundred-forty-eight thousand, one-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars. And as was mentioned, TIF II is all but closed, still creating some increments from 2018, which payable in 2019, and some of that will fall into that two-hundred-forty-eight thousand dollars. But a good hundred thousand of that is not in our budget, and will have to be paid from another source, another capital source, which has not yet been identified by the council. And in going forward, whatever the council decides with respect to support for Barb City Manor on an annual basis, again, there will have to be a capital source, and we have not yet identified what that would be. I dare say largely because of what we're talking about tonight, and also because of another large capital need, which is repair of our streets, that when we have our late summer workshop and we get to capital items, that will be a big part of that discussion going ahead. But to the matter at hand, there are two proposals that have seen some circulation. At the last council discussion on May thirteenth, the mayor suggested, and there was no vote, but there was some head nodding and so forth, that maybe we could look at a five-year lease agreement, and there would be a diminishing amount of money per year from the city, fifty thousand the first year, forty thousand and so forth, down to ten thousand in the last year of that five-year proposition. And as was described earlier by a couple of our speakers, Barb City Manor board has considered that and has countered with a proposal for a ten-year lease with an annual financial contribution of fifty thousand dollars from the city. Searching for a middle ground, I threw another possible option on the table for tonight's discussion, and that's basically hitting the middle with a five-year lease at fifty thousand dollars a year. I recognize, however, that, as was spoken to tonight, if you're a resident living there now, or if you're thinking of making a decision and moving into a place which still provides a level of independence, but some care and as needed from other sources, that a five-year agreement may be worrisome. So with that, I ask that the council give some direction to us at the staff level. We are in very amicable conversation with the Barb City Manor board and staff, but we're at that point where we need some more direction from you. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, I will now open it up for discussion and comments from our city council, and I would like to solicit those comments. Alderman McAdams.
From the residents that I've spoken to about Barb City Manor, they've all been expressing great support for the organization and the institution. I like the idea of finding a compromise. I appreciate that we may have to, instead of providing a ten-year lease, a five-year lease, but I would urge city staff to find a revenue source or identify revenue sources for us to consider so that we can try and meet the ten-year obligation, if possible.
So you'd be comfortable with either the five-year at fifty or ten-year at fifty, depending on what the consensus of this council is tonight?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Alderman Fagan.
You know, I've also gotten phone calls on people. It's interesting being brought up about concern about if we go to a five-year lease and where they would be if they entered in the next year or two. I rest assured that person that, you know, it's city property and it's an institution in DeKalb, and I don't think any council is going to let it go by the wayside. I think that, I don't know where we're going to get fifty thousand dollars, but I would like to see possibly a five-year with an option with a five. But, you know, I think it was also brought up in the last meeting I was here about this was, you know, a lot of these nonprofits, they have to bring up the contributions, the donations. We saw that happen with the Egyptian Theater. Obviously, we're talking about apples and oranges there, but, you know, it's still our building, and we still have to take care of it, and I get that. And it is a transition for people to come through there, and we need to keep this. But maybe with, I'd like to see, I don't want to handcuff the next council or anyone ten years down the road, but then again, I don't want to see that Barb City is to go away. I mean, we need it. And absolutely, Mr. Klein brought up about, there's a lot of people in town that can't afford other options like Oak Crest or what have you. You drive by there, you see the people outside enjoying the day. We're very fortunate to have that. We're very fortunate to have a building that's held up. Everything that the architects and everything have said, I mean, we're very fortunate that it was built very, very well back in that day. With that said, you know, how do you get... With that said, you know, how do you get money? And where do you start and where do you stop? I'd like to see a five-year with an option of another five. I think that would be fair. That would alleviate at least some stress of anybody thinking of the, to go in. And I really think that there was people in town that won't let it go. I really don't. But that's my, that's my thought on it.
Yeah, it's sort of detailing on Alderman McAdams in the sense it's a five-year, the option to five, you know, and then perhaps we could see what's happening at the end of that first five years.
Absolutely.
How active has that fundraising gone? How, how, how active has the philanthropic community come forward in terms of assisting the facility? So I think, I think I hear both Alderman McAdams and Alderman Fagan, and Alderman Morris is waving at me vociferously down there. Carolyn?
I feel very much the same as Alderman Fagan mentioned, that, you know, we don't want to tie any future council's hands, but at the same time, I think we all feel very strongly that this is a service to the community, and as our population ages, there is no question that this, the value that's provided by Barb City Manor is only going to grow. So I think we all agree that it's a really solid thing that we want to keep going and do whatever we can to do so, just as the city manager sort of pointed at. So I think I'm open to both of these ideas that you've both mentioned, that you've all mentioned, but I think maybe if we reassure residents to the idea that we don't see any future councils just dropping this and letting it fall through and fall by the wayside, we want to make sure that this is continued.
Thank you. Alderman Faber.
So I, I know that I've, I've not heard a, I've never heard a negative word spoken about Barb City Manor. I mean, and every comment has always been positive. The city does own the building, I believe, Bill, that we had proposed to give the building to Barb City Manor in our original offer, and that's been turned down. Is that correct?
Yeah, I don't know if the mayor's proposal actually had that in. There was conversation on May thirteenth about that possibility, and I don't know if that was even discussed by the board, but what the Barb City Manor Board came back with was a ten-year and fifty thousand.
I'm in agreement with the rest of the council members. It seems we have an agreement on a five-year and potentially considering another five-year. I would also be in, in favor of transferring ownership of the building as well. That would be something that I would be.
What was that, Tony, I couldn't hear you?
Transfer of ownership of the building to Barb City Manor from the city.
I felt like they had said that that was less than desirable, just because then they'd be responsible for all of it, and so.
Any other comment? Alderman Fanouk.
So I think I'd like to offer a little bit of a hybrid. I think I'd like to see it continue to be a ten-year lease, as we've talked about fifty thousand a year for the first five, and then begin the diminishing amount of money after that. So in the sixth year, it'd be forty, then thirty, then twenty, then ten, and finally in the tenth year, it'd be no additional financial support. Again, I think that answers their dilemma of having that ten-year security plan, but allows us some time to adjust and find some money as we move forward. I think, Bill, you've already said that we already owe them that approximately two-hundred fifty thousand, so that would take care of the first five years, and then we're just looking at an additional a hundred thousand over the next four years after that. Well, I understand that the money's not all spoken for, but as Bill has said, though, that we, in theory, would owe them the two-hundred fifty. So what I'm saying is that that might be a compromise between what the boards proposed and what we've talked about so far up here. Again, it just gives them a more of a confidence for the residents, for the employees, for the staff, and for the city moving forward, that I think that's something that is doable without tying the hands too strongly of any future council.
Alderman Smith.
Bill, just, the two-hundred forty-eight thousand is on the books, correct? It's not funded?
It's, it's owed. So it's, it's a debt, it's a fact.
But isn't that money coming out of TIF?
A hundred forty-seven thousand is. We have to find another hundred and one thousand dollars. That's part of the yet-to-be-named capital source. And let me, could I touch on that, maybe just so, it might help the council as you're thinking about this tonight, and, you know, without prefiguring what we discuss in late July or early August, we're still working on that, that date. Presumably, you'd want to find capital money from a capital source. That is sort of the conventional sources and uses exercised in public budgeting. If that's the case, you have one current capital source outside of TIF, and as you all know, TIF isn't going to apply here after this year. And that, that's the source we use for our streets. Remember, last week, we voted to put a lot of money into North First Street and some other street repair, and that's motor fuel tax money. Comes to us, obviously, it's a tax on gallons pumped at the, at the pump. And that's a potential source. State of Illinois has just dribbled some healthy increases to what you pay at the pump, so this is a local contribution to that, possibly. It's a, it's a, it's a option that you have to consider, and the only other option is going to generate a lot of money. It's not going to be through. We can't save anything on the capital side to come up with the fifty thousand dollars or unless you want to start cutting into the road repair budget every year, because that's basically it. When I came in, said, "Let's look at the general capital fund." Well, guess what? We don't have one. We have, we have a motor fuel tax fund, and then we have the water fund, which is an enterprise fund, and never shall ye pull from that for this purpose. So the only other thing you can do is raise something like the home rule tax. Well, we're already high in comparison with our fellow communities in Illinois, and that would be noticed by people of all income levels. So, but these are options you'll consider. In the short run, though, and as you're thinking about this tonight and where you're going to come up with the fifty thousand, it's not going to be out of the current budget, unless you want to take it out of the operating side, which I'd recommend that you not do, because every dollar of our property tax this year, you've heard me say this before, is going into pensions. And we're still short on what our funding obligation is, so we took another half a million out of our general fund reserve in December 2018 to help fund that minimum obligation. And we're still at forty, less than fifty, forty, forty-five percent of where full funding would be. So I don't see how we compete on the capital side with the operating side, which has now basically sales and use taxes to live on. That's where we are.
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Fanouk.
Just, you know, the road, road, motor fuel tax issue, though, just confuses the issue because we couldn't touch that for that anyway, because the Illinois amendment lockbox, any of the motor fuel tax that we collect has to go towards the road, so that, that just confuses the issue.
It's, it's a cost shifting that I had in mind. You're right, if that was literally the case, but what we can put into the roads, then we can find maybe a shift in some other funds.
Well, how much can we afford to give them?
What's that, Carolyn?
How much can we afford to give them? So it sounds like we can't afford to give them fifty thousand a year, right?
We don't have that in operating, but you can identify a new and, or maybe an augmented capital source.
And the first payment would be due in, at what time?
The lease starts on July first. There is a carryover, as we've been discussing, but that money is going to be earmarked for other projects.
So it sounds like we don't have any money to give them.
As we sit here tonight, but I suppose we could, you know, if we'd sign on and we, and extend the lease, which I think is exactly what the council wants to do, then we're obligated to come up with the fifty thousand, and then council action will have to identify a future capital source for that.
So what types of capital sources would that be?
Well, more revenue. It's not going to be, again, going back to the capital side, we don't have money to pull out of the motor fuel tax fund, which is already dedicated to our roads. New revenue source.
Your options are not attractive.
I didn't say they were.
Let me put some kind of rep around this, because what we need to do is to give our city manager enough fodder to chew on, that fodder being a consensus that at minimum, this council feels that fifty thousand a year for five years is something that we're going to have to wrestle with, but it's worth getting on to the wrestling match. It's worth getting on the match. It puts a tremendous onus on us and future city councils, Alderman Fagan, to your point, that we work with Barb City Manor to make sure that when 2024 comes along, I think that's what, that would be, that we have a plan in place to go with that second option for that second five years, that it seems that we have some agreement on tonight. And Alderman Fanouk, while I certainly appreciate your hybrid of fifty, forty, thirty, twenty, ten, I'd like to sort of keep that, put that back in the back burner, because who knows? We, we may be in a position to do the full fifty for that second five-year period, but that fifty, forty, thirty, twenty, ten might be something that we will have to do. Does that make sense?
So then, as I understand it, though, what we're, as a group, we're recommending is a five-year lease at fifty per.
That's right.
And then an option for five years with any additional financial considerations to be determined.
That is correct. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
That's my understanding right now.
May I say one thing here?
Sure, please do.
And I joined all this with other infrastructure needs and so forth, but clearly, we have to grow. We have to grow revenue, and a couple of items on the agenda later on are going to help us do that, I think. And we may not see that this year or next year, but I think, as I sit here, I'm encouraged by what I'm seeing and people wanting to come and invest in our community, and property tax will grow. We have to, we have to deal with how we're wrestling with the escalating pension costs, which is partly in, probably more than half owing to decisions downstate that can be made or weren't made and can be made, but aren't going to be made in this session. But I think we could find a fifty thousand. We're not going to find enough to deal with the roads, but that's where the motor fuel tax comes in, and that's another challenge for you to discuss in your workshop. But can we find a fifty thousand out of, out of more growth? Yeah, other things working out, you know, we get a little more property tax, and every dollar doesn't have to go into pensions, and we get a little more sales tax and use taxes, restaurant bar taxes and the rest. But we have to grow. There's no doubt about it. And we're not going to find any grants. Every once in a while, we get a grant, that's great, but it's, you know, sucked up right away. We, we put it into equipment and machines and things like that. So when we see an opportunity, and we've got trustworthy people to work with, we have to do some partnerships with, with the business side of our community.
There are a number of us up here who remember the pain a year, eighteen months ago, in working with Finance Advisory Committee in making line item cuts. It was not a painless experience. I remember when we brought our city manager on and charged him with the responsibility of making some much-needed cuts. The personnel cuts certainly were not those that did not cause some people pain. So what I hear this city council tonight doing is simply saying Barb City Manor is worth going to the mat for, Barb City Manor is going to receive fifty thousand dollars a year over the next five years, and we're going to do our darndest to see that fifty thousand dollars a year beyond that is something that we hope, and I stress, we hope, we can do. Is that what I hear?
Yes.
Bill, is that what you hear?
I just want to clarify one thing.
Sure.
You said five years, fifty thousand? And Alderman Fanouk had suggested the possibility of a...
Possibility. Let's wait, let's wait till we get to that.
But do we want to, do we want to have the lease be for ten at this point with financial considerations of the second five years to be determined? That's what I'm hearing.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I agree, yeah.
Well, is that, excuse me?
Sure.
Is that something, because this is a consideration, or is this?
It's a consideration, but I was going to bring something back to you next week.
Yes, throwing, throwing it back to staff.
You certainly can extend the lease month by month until we work it out.
Well, that's what I'm thinking. If we can extend it, I don't know if we're going to get anything settled tonight, or maybe two weeks from now, but if we can extend it. I always feel about this is it will work out some way or another, because I think we all want it to work.
Absolutely.
So I don't want to rush into anything, so I'm going to throw it back to you, Bill.
Well, we have a lot of goodwill, and the leadership of the Barb City Manor, Inc. is very eager to try to resolve this as well, but in a way that they can live with and we can live with. So I think we're on the same page there. We have to work out the details. I can go back, we can have some conversation. The, the board of Barb City Manor has expressed its preference for ten years, and how we get there and what funding levels, I think, is the area for further negotiation.
Okay, any other comments? You fairly clear then, Bill, about what it is that
Thank you.
you need to do to come up with a proposal? Would that be a proposal coming back to us on the 24th?
I'll try, and if I don't, I'll certainly report where we are.
Okay, well, thank you for everyone from Barb City Manor and for those in the community who feel so passionate, as you can see, as this council does, about a treasure down between Haitian First Street there, so Barb City Manor. Okay, let's move along to J, Resolutions. We have a number of those to consider tonight. The first one is number one, Resolution 2019-090, approving the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Annual Action Plan. That's one-year use of funds for the program year 26, April 1, 2019, through March 31, 2020. To get this to the floor, I'd like to entertain a motion, please.
No move.
Second?
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouk and seconded by Alderman Faber. City manager Nicholas.
We had a public hearing. There wasn't anything contributed except that I offered a few remarks for the record. I'd be happy to, happy to answer any questions you may have. Joan Rouse is in the audience tonight and can help with the details, and she's done a terrific job year in and year out in, in hammering out those details. So we recommend approval of the plan as presented to you.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Fagan.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Faber.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouk.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
That resolution passes. Move along to number two, Resolution 2019-091, authorizing the award of a bid with with D. Ryan Tree and Landscaping, LLC for tree removal, trimming, and emergency storm cleanup from July 1, 2019, through December 31, 2022. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second. It's been entered, it's been moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman Smith. And before we turn this over to a comment from City Manager Nicholas, I'd indicate that Alderman Fagan has recused himself because of a interest with D. Ryan. Bill?
Thank you. Just as I say in my background, we've got a lot of trees, six thousand or more or less. And the spring rains have been very kind to them. They're just booming, which is great. From time to time, we have to, with our city personnel, have to do some trimming. And on occasion, after a storm, for instance, when there's a lot of emergency tree trimming and it has to be done, clear lines and so forth, we have to go for other help. And then also where there may be something beyond the reach of our own equipment. And so we went to bid on May 3 and solicited contractor bids for the range of services we were looking for. We only had one response. That was from D. Ryan Tree and Landscaping. There's a chart on page five that shows the relative costs of different types of tree trimming and removal and so forth, cleanup. Mr. Ryan, who's the owner, has been running a local company in DeKalb for many, many years. He's performed our tree services for the past four years consecutively. And we've been very pleased with his services. He understands what our limits are. And we understand when it's appropriate to bring somebody else in. And it's been a good relationship. We support this and we hope you will too.
Been moved and seconded. That we approve this resolution. Any further discussion? Roll call.
McAdams.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Six I.
That resolution passes. Moving on, number three, Resolution 2019-092, Authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation for public transit funding from the Illinois Downstate Operating Assistance Program from July 1, 2019, through June 30, 2020, in an amount not to exceed five million, seven hundred and eleven thousand and six hundred dollars. Motion, please.
So moved.
Seconded. Been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Would indicate that Alderman Smith has recused himself from this because he is employed, I think, by VAC, which would benefit. Do you know if Alderman Morris has recused herself?
I cannot answer that question. I cannot answer that.
You cannot answer that question, okay? So we would expect her back for this vote. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Six I.
That resolution passes. Thank you. Number four, Resolution 2019-093, Authorizing a special event agreement with DeKalb Corn Fest Incorporated for the 2019 Corn Fest. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman McAdam, seconded by Alderman Morris. Again, once, again, Alderman Fagan has recused himself because he deals with the Corn Fest committee in a business way. I don't know if Alderman Smith is coming back here. I don't think he has recused himself for this. Welcome back, Tracy.
Sure.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Alderman Fa, or Alderman Fanouken.
Thank you. I just would like to ensure that, you know, Corn Fest continues operating as they have the last few years with the entire dining and drinking area be controlled as a no-smoking area, you know, in line with state law.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Six I.
That resolution passes. Next, number five, Resolution 2019-094, Initiating the establishment of an estimated completion date for tax increment financing, TIF District 1. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman Fagan. Prior to City Manager Nicholas making any remarks he might like to on this, we have one speaker who would like to speak to this item, and that is, once again, Steve Capitan.
Well, the council's vote at the previous meeting notwithstanding, my view is that before the city ends TIF number one, I believe that it is a responsible thing to do to be certain and evaluate, thoroughly evaluate the viability of renovating the existing city hall using TIF funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, all, City Manager Nicholas.
Thank you, Mayor. This topic was considered at the meeting on May 23. And as you know, the Joint Review Board had taken this up at a number of occasions in the last couple of months. And also, as recently, is there a quarterly meeting at the end of April. It, this resolution formalizes your concurrence in step with the Joint Review Board. And we support this resolution and hope you will as well.
I think we've talked about this and looked at the background information quite extensively. But having said that, is there any further discussion on this item? If not, roll call, please.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
That resolution passes. Thank you. Number six, Resolution 2019-095, Budgeting a preliminary development tax increment financing incentive for the redevelopment of the former Mooney properties at 204 North Fourth Street and 420 Oak Street for commercial and residential uses subject to a final redevelopment agreement. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Favor. We do have two folks who would like to speak to this item. First of all, Duane Brown.
Duane Brown, Fourth Ward. I'm glad to see Mr. Pappas has amended his plans for the Mooney property. The Planning and Zoning Commission, during their May 14 meeting, complained that the original designs look like a prison. The two planned buildings are now one L-shaped building with improved outward appearance and a total of 215 parking spaces. There is public transportation available on Locust Street. I like the idea for a fitness center, hospitality rooms, and outdoor terraces. I have passed by the Mooney property many times and wondered what that building would be repurposed for. This plan is even better. I have mentioned to Lisa Freeman before that 45% of NIU staff live outside DeKalb County. This project could be a magnet to retain more staff to live in DeKalb. It could put us on par with St. Charles and Geneva for visitors and foot traffic downtown. This is a potential generator for new development in DeKalb and downtown. This $13.8 million project could help with the sale of the former O'Learys and McCabe's. The property tax and sales tax benefits to the city could possibly exceed the estimates. We have a developer with a proven track record who is willing to invest his capital in DeKalb. I ask the council to approve this project and the city to assist as much as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Duane. Steve Capitan.
Steve Capitan, Third Ward. While I've not scrutinized this second proposal in great detail, my look at it, initial look at it, is that it looks like a quality project, echoing some of the comments that Duane had made. But I'd like to make two points about it. It's my view that, in principle, the purchase price of a property should not be considered in the calculation of the percentage of the city's participation and of the subsidy as a percentage of the project. If we were to do so, then that puts us at the level of one of the investors in this project. Because that purchased property, or the purchase price is the equity in the property that the, that Mr. Pappas is making. Secondly, if such a structure of not including that pushes the, pushes the amount down and below what is proposed, I think that the city should consider allowing for an additional story of this property if that would be helpful to make it viable. Because with the downtown, I think that the limitations that the city has on height are very restrictive. So I think that's something that should be considered as a counterbalance to a smaller participation. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. City Manager Nicholas.
Thank you, Mayor. As our speakers noted, there's been some change in the concept plan and elevations, conceptual elevations and floor plans since the council last saw this on May 13. And I thought I'd take a few minutes to walk you through that. You can see on the monitors what is the current conceptual plan. And this was much influenced, I would say, by the conversation, not only here on May 13, but on May 22 before the Planning and Zoning Commission. You'll recall that the original plan showed two separated buildings that were slung east-west on the site. There was some discussion, although the Planning and Zoning Commission did not specifically recommend the kind of configuration you see here. But there's been a lot of community conversation about the fact that the current building, even though it's vacant and in very sad shape, does present an urban look, which you can see as you're driving north on Fourth Street as you're crossing the tracks. You can see something. So something that's redeveloped and presentable and attractive will certainly help to, it being a magnet for visitors because there is a commercial floor here and also for people who want to live there. So Mr. Pappas took this to heart and has created this concept plan for our consideration tonight. One other consideration was the number of parking spaces. Now, originally, there were quite a number, a high 100, I think 177 originally. But the city requirement is somewhere in the vicinity of about 220. The actual number will be based on, you know, final number of units and so forth. But what's proposed here now is some additional property that is going to be thrown into the project up on the Oak Street frontage at the northeast side, which adds additional parking. So now, it says in the background, and this is, remember, I wrote this about a week ago. We had a number of 215 spaces versus the original 177. Now we have 251. So we're well in excess of the required number of parking spaces. And the access on Oak and further east on Locust, the principal access points also will help with any congestion that might otherwise have occurred on Fourth Street with turning movements and the like. Some things have not changed. And one of those is the impact, as Mr. Brown suggested, in terms of the redevelopment benefit. The current, I had much more detail on this in the last council agenda, but the current, well, the 2018 tax benefit was about 35,000. And upon completion, at that time, with a smaller, slightly smaller footprint, we had looked at the possibility of about $400,000 a year. And that's a huge jump upon full build-out. And I think, as Mr. Brown said, that's probably a conservative estimate. So that's good news for all local taxing bodies and also for the city. But maybe the best news is the constructive reuse of this site, which has been vacant and deteriorating for about 10 years now. And there's been lots of opportunity for other investors to step up, and they haven't. And Mr. Pappas has stepped up with his investment company and is willing to go the full distance to recreate a positive and attractive and welcoming site. Specifically, what's before you tonight is a resolution that makes a preliminary commitment. It basically says, this is the intent of the council. We like this. We intend to dedicate $3 million toward this over time. And it's about a two-and-a-half-year build-out period. But no money goes out the door until there's a final development agreement. You remember this from last December. There were three preliminary development agreements. And ultimately, two of them morphed into permanent commitments on a part of the council and the expenditure of actual TIF dollars. And that awaits the full, the presentation of full building plans and some more zoning considerations on a final review. So what this does tonight, if you approve this, and we recommend that you do approve this resolution, is to make the commitment, which allows the developer to continue in his due diligence to get to that point where we will have ordinances up for you at some future council meeting with the plans that I've described very generally to you. So we feel this is a real contribution to the downtown. By the way, although we had no idea what the concept would look like, back in 2013, the council, a different council, I don't know if anybody was on the council at that time, approved a downtown redevelopment plan. It still is the excellent downtown redevelopment plan. And identified this site and also the redevelopment of the library and the redevelopment of the Egyptian Theater as sort of the triangle of the new downtown. The, and that, what you see up there is sort of the fulfillment of that last piece. We support this at the staff level and hope the council will support it tonight.
I know there will be, or there may be, further discussion on this. Thank you, City Manager Nicholas. I look at that and I echo Duane Brown's comments. But I really appreciate the public's input on this and the public's input through our Planning and Zoning Commission. And it's obvious here that our developer has listened. And Mr. Pappas has come forward with something that personally looks to me to be much better. It certainly doesn't look like a prison. But, no, that's a nice view, too. But this takes me back just several years ago when we looked at a drawing similar to this and we were going to do something called cornerstone. And I remember thinking, do you think we can... And I remember thinking, "Do you think we can really have that built? Do you think we can really do that? Wow, look what Cornerstone has done." And I think, hopefully, we're going to see the same thing by the end of the summer, perhaps, or in the fall of Plaza de Cal. And I realize this is preliminary, and I really appreciate the volumes of input from the public on this, pro and con, on this proposal. But I think you wrapped it up pretty well, City Manager Nicholas. Now, with those comments, I would like to turn it over to any councilman who may have a comment. Alderman Fanouken?
Just a quick question. As the concept plan sits now, how many apartments are we talking about here? Because I don't see that in the backup.
Yeah.
Eighty-six.
Eighty-six. Thanks, John.
Thank you. It's changed slightly since the last. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Morris?
I really don't want to go against what you guys are saying, that it looks more attractive, but I feel like the orientation of the other two buildings, the way they were with the green space in the center, was much more attractive. This feels very much like it's mimicking Cornerstone, and it is right on the edge there, and it's so, I mean, I don't want to, you know, split hairs over how exactly he's going to do it. And so, I'm not sure. I would love to see the two images, and I've been searching the internet here, trying to find the other image, and I'm not succeeding, but I would love to see the two images side by side and be like, hmm, you know, besides the orientation of the building, what's really different here? And I do see that maybe probably more windows, and I see the upper levels a little different. But, so, I mean, as far as attractiveness goes, I know that was the big outcry, a lot of the outcry, this seems much more, much less attractive to me. So, I just can't hold that in.
Isn't it nice to disagree? I mean, we, perhaps we are not designers, perhaps you more than I. Anything else, Carolyn?
That's all. That's all I have.
Alderman, the favor?
So, I don't want to speak negatively to your comments, but this is, again, a criticism of the city of DeKalb, that someone wants to come into DeKalb and invest in a project, and they're asked by one group to change their
Right.
plans and to maybe consider, and consider really means change your plans, and take another look at how you're going to do that. And they go ahead and they do that, and they spend the money and time, architectural fees, and they make the plan, and they come back, and we tell them, "Thank you so much for making your changes. We really appreciate that, but have you considered possibly doing X?" They're investing, the majority of this project, eighty-plus or, I'm sorry, 70-plus percent is his money and his investment, and I would think any businessman or woman, any businessperson who is going to build something has considered what it is they're going to build, how it's going to be the most attractive, how it's going to benefit them personally through sales and through attracting residents. And again, if we had an architectural plan for the downtown that we wanted to enforce or something like that, we just keep sending mixed messages to people who want to come and invest in the city of DeKalb because we're not allowing them to come and invest. We're asking them to come and invest, and then we turn around and say, after they've made a significant investment of time and money into architectural plans, we say, "That looks great. Now that you've done all that work, I can visualize what you want to do, but I think you might want to consider something else." And it's really unfortunate that we continue to keep putting our foot kind of in our mouth that way when we do that because it is going to drive away investment from the city of DeKalb.
You got that off your chest pretty well, Tony.
Thank you.
Any further comments? Alderman Smith?
I guess, Bill, one, something keeps crossing my mind, I'm looking at the old Fourth Street Motors. What is the setback on Locust?
It's built right up to the sidewalk.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I have to go, I've heard a lot of pros and cons, I will say this, and I believe in both sides of this, but I have to say, I agree with Alderman Faver, that we need to, you know, work with our developers a little more. This is a lot of money. What would we do with that building? I've heard rehab it. That's ridiculous. I'm sorry. You know, that I've been in when it was Fourth Street Motors. What happens if the building sits there for another 10 years? What if the building, what if the wall, north wall, falls down? I've been asking these questions, and I put this to people that have come to me. No one could come up with an answer. Will the city be back on the hook? Is the bank going to let it go? Are we going to have to pay considerably more money to rehab that? Tear it down? This is a good venture for the city, I'm sorry, and good use of TIF funds.
Any other comments? Okay, we've had a motion on the floor, a second considerable discussion. Roll call.
Smith?
Yes.
Fagan?
Fagan has recused himself because he's dealing with Mr. Pappas.
McAdams?
No.
Faver?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Five I, one nay, one recusal.
That resolution passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number seven, Resolution 2019-096, authorizing a special event agreement with fun-me events for the 2019 balloons, baroes, and balloons event. Motion, please.
So moved. Seconded?
Been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Alderman or City Manager Nicholas, please.
Thank you. Well, it brings a smile to your face, and I think that's good because this is going to be fun.
Yeah.
It's not just because it's fun-me events. It's truly going to be fun, and it's an event that's going to happen. We've been working with Mr. Embry and his folks to make sure it's well-received and it's a safe adventure for people on the 22nd, and we're confident that'll be the case. There is some business side to this. There's an agreement, which is what you're looking at tonight. There are certain reciprocal obligations there. There are some costs that we will incur, firefighters and police officers that will be reimbursed from the proceeds from this event. We hope it's a booming success and is the first of a number over time, and that will only get bigger. So, Tom Cleveland has done a lot to help lead our community toward a vibrant airport operation, and he's been working closely with Mike. We're going to make sure that this works well, and I appreciate all of their detailed work, and we recommend your approval.
Yeah, really look forward to this. Three to nine p.m., June 22, Saturday, two bands, eight-thirty p.m. in the evening, Balloon Glow, balloons, blues, and brews. Yeah, I think it's great. Any comments? Alderman Fanouken?
Just, as I'm reading this, I want to make sure my take is correct. Tom, maybe you can answer that the one runway will remain open for use, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Faver?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Seven I?
Resolution passes. Michael, thank you so much for bringing this to our consideration, for our consideration. Let's have a great time on June 22. Thanks for all you do for our community. Number eight, Resolution 2019-097, authorizing intergovernmental agreement with the DeKalb Township Road District for maintenance on Rich Road and Coltonville Road. Motion, please.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved by Alderman Faver, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City Manager Nicholas?
DeKalb Township Road Commissioner Craig Smith has been waiting patiently in the audience to hope. You don't have to say anything unless you want to, Craig. The, this resolution is wonderful for the city of DeKalb because there are some areas, when we annex, and in this case, it's portions of River Mist in particular, a little bit more, where we annex to the middle of the road, sometimes to the far side of the road. And sometimes, these roads have historically been maintained by DeKalb Township. We work out with our Public Works Department, a arrangement where we collaborate on these feathered edges of our community, and this is in case a point, exactly one of those. In this case, though, the township would, the road district would be assuming the maintenance of the stretch which goes, if you're driving north on First and you hit Rich Road, Coltonville is to the east and Rich is to the west. If you were to go around the corner and go east, you go about 300 yards, and that's where this stops. And if you turned around, made an illegal turn, or it might be a legal turn. Can you do a U-turn on Rich? Maybe not. And head west through the intersection, you'll go roughly past where River Mist ends. So, that's the stretch. And we thank the road commissioner for his willingness to do this. We do other things together, and it sort of evens out, but the road district under Mr. Smith has been very judicious and meticulous about getting intergovernmental agreements to formalize what used to be understandings because the more we do of this, and none of us live forever, we want to make sure that we're memorializing the good trust and understanding we have, and that's what this is all about. Thank you, Craig, for your help with us, and we recommend your approval.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Faver?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Seven I?
That resolution passes. We value tremendously the collaboration with a number of our agencies, our governmental agencies, including with DeKalb Township. Craig, thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, our final resolution this evening, number nine, Resolution 2019-098, authorizing an amendment to Resolution 2014-038, initiating a six-month extension to the agreement with Northern Illinois University for safety services, including fire protection and ambulance service through December 31, 2019. I'd entertain a motion, please. So moved.
Seconded.
Been moved by Alderman Faver, seconded by Alderman Smith. Any discussion not with that, with Alderman?
Just, we recommend your support. What we're looking for is just to extend this. The Board of Trustees meets on a quarterly basis, and their last meeting, they took this up. They noticed that there are some new features to this. We're trying to be comprehensive for the first time and include not just the basic EMS and suppression services, but also from time to time, we, in the summer months, sometimes over holidays, we have welcomed the opportunity to train in some of their high-rise towers, and it includes some language relating to that training. And so, the board was not ready to vote, and we said, "We're happy to bring this to the council and ask for six months. We're not going to need six months, but we're happy to bring it forward to you."
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Smith?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Faver?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Seven I?
That resolution passes. Thank you. Moving along to ordinances. First of all, K, ordinances, second reading, there are none this evening. We have two ordinances for first reading to consider. Number one, Ordinance 2019-044, amending the fiscal year-end, December 31, 2018 budget. I'd entertain a motion to this, please.
So moved. Seconded.
Was that you, Scott?
Yes, it was.
Been moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Smith. Bill?
Yeah, just a couple of points. One, we're talking about three funds in my narrative. There was a little bit of, this is a moving feast a little bit as we're putting this together, and I originally thought there would be four funds. There are just three funds, and that is reflected in the chart on page 11. The total of those changes is a little over $50,000, those three funds out of 29. I think this is good evidence of the very careful management of our finances by Ray Munch and the people who work in the finance office, that as we are nearing the end of the audit for 2018, which we'll be bringing to you soon, this is all that we really need to change in terms of budget amendments, so we recommend your approval.
And I understand this requires a supermajority vote?
It does, so we need six.
Any discussion? Roll call. Excuse me, Alderman McAdams?
I have two questions. The first question is the $36,131 for the airport fund. It's my understanding those funds would be purchasing gasoline that we would then sell at a profit. Is that correct?
This is, actually, if you're, in the background, I say here, what we got was a pass-through grant which prompted the over, I'm not answering your question. Your question, just generally, do we sell?
Is that what we are approving this evening?
It's a little different. So, it's just that we spent more than we expected to spend, what you would authorize us to spend. And so, it's not the revenue side, which is that, yeah, we try to sell for more than our cost and make some money. That's one of the key revenue sources for the airport. In this case, we had some money come in in the way of a grant, which is all good news, but then we spent more than we expected to spend, therefore, the overage.
Okay.
Okay?
And then the other question, this was going to be placed for waiver of second reading because there was a legal consideration? Is that correct?
Well, we're nearing the end of the audit. To get the audit to you in due course, we would rather not carry this over for another two weeks.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Fagan?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Faver?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Seven I?
That ordinance is approved on first reading?
I'd like to move that we waive second reading and approve.
Seconded.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken and seconded by Alderman Fagan, that we waive second reading and approve this ordinance. Any discussion? Roll call.
McAdams?
No.
Faver?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Six I?
And those votes then do make it a supermajority. Is that correct?
It's correct.
Okay, thank you. Yep, ordinance passes. Let's move along to number two, Ordinance 2019-045, prohibiting the use of groundwater as a potable water supply by the installation or use of potable water supply wells or by any other method at 125 North Antiglen Road. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Faver. City Manager Nicholas?
Yes. I think this is confusing, but it's pretty simple. The Road Ranger, which is the owner of the fuel station on North Antiglen Road, has had issues and is making IEPA-supervised improvements to its leaking underground storage tanks, and the IEPA requires at this point that the city not allow, not that you have any intent to do this, the drilling of ground wells for drinking water on their site. Sounds pretty sensible, but they need confirmation that you, as a corporate body, have arrived at that conclusion. And certainly, we would prohibit any private owner from doing the same.
Right. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on this? Roll call.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
McAdams?
Alderman Verbrick was here, he would strongly speak in favor of this. This owner wants to get moving and get back in business.
Yeah, that's in Mike's, yeah, that's in Mike's ward over there. Yeah, right. Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Finuchen.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Thank you.
That ordinance is approved, based on its
Seven aye.
Based, thank you, based on its approval and waiver of second reading and approval. Okay, now we move to the final item on our agenda tonight, the reports and communications.
Point of order?
Yes.
We missed a resolution. There's a resolution authorizing the execution of a workers' compensation on some petition.
Consent. That was part of the consent.
Oh, was it? I apologize.
It was unconsent, and we moved that. Okay. Thank you, Alderman McAdams, for getting that up. Because I certainly know that sometimes we get confused as we go through the agenda. Okay.
I'm going to plead that I'm a new guy.
Yeah, I know that. Reports and communications. Alderman Morris.
Nothing, Sherwood.
No report? Alderman Finuchen.
I'm just going to congratulate our friendly rivals to the north on their Class 3A softball championship.
You know, I was so impressed, too, reading that our fire department met that motorcade coming off the tollway and sort of accompanied that girls' softball team from Sycamore and handed them off vigorously to our Sycamore Fire Department. Jeff, I was impressed with that. Community collaboration in its finest. Thank you. Alderman Smith?
Nothing.
Alderman Fagan?
No report.
Alderman McAdams?
I just wanted to mention that the site at Protonos, we're continuing to do work on that. I want to give a shout-out to RP Lumber and Hy-Vee for the donation of lumber and flowers, and Chuck Favor and Andy Small, who have offered to help put that all together. Tomorrow morning, if you'd like to join us at 9:00 a.m., we're going to try and get some work done, and we'd be glad to see you.
Thank you. Alderman Favor.
Nobody else has said it, so Music at the Mansion starts on Wednesday night, and you did mention earlier the municipal band is tomorrow night.
Yeah, so many great things coming up. Music at the Mansion, the band concert tomorrow night, Blues Brews and Brews, Blues coming up. You notice the flowers along Lincoln Highway are up now, those planters. It looks beautiful. They're going to look better as we get a little warmer weather here, and we probably had enough moisture. Although our Public Works Department does a nice job of continuing to water those, don't they, Brian? So thank you. I have just a couple of comments. Following the recent legislative session in Springfield and after recent conversations with our local representatives, I just today sent to Alderman a review by Illinois Municipal League Executive Director Brad Cole of the impacts of the new state budget on municipalities like the city of DeKalb. This Thursday, Sycamore Mayor Kurt Lang and I will be traveling to Belvidere, where Cole will personally review these impacts to the Northern Illinois Mayors Association meeting. Also, I can report that within the past several weeks, I have met personally with 14th District Representative Lauren Underwood, as well as Luke Phalen, Regional staffer for 16th District Representative Adam Kinzinger. What we do and what we're able to do depends so often on working with state and national legislators. The city of DeKalb continues to do just that. Rest assured that DeKalb does have a presence in Springfield and in Washington, D.C. City Clerk Fizikas, any report?
No report, thank you.
City Manager Nicholas.
No report.
There is no executive session tonight, and entertain a motion to adjourn this regular meeting of the city council?
So moved.
Seconded.
Been moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman Fagan. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? We are adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.